All right, good evening and welcome. It is November 4th, 6:00 PM. Call meeting the order of the school committee. Just would like to mention that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. And I'd like to ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Sophia.
Sophia Yakovachin, student representative.
Bill Fatsika.
Rich Fuchero.
Sarah Trulio.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Antonella Rochilla.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Spolletti, secretary.
Okay, thank you all. We have some meeting minutes for approval this evening.
I make a motion to approve the October 21st, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded by Antonella. Further discussion? Hearing non-holds of favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. One more.
I'm going to approve the October 21st regular session meeting minutes.
Made?
Seconded.
And seconded, discussion.
Hearing non-holds of favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Committee and subcommittee communications.
Okay. So, I've been involved with a lot of the diversity, student equity, like that committee. And so, we met as just a committee with some students and teachers in the school a few days ago. And we, the people from the NCCJ came. And we talked about some action steps that we can take within our own school to improve equity in our school. And then, so we just kind of, that was kind of the first time that they came to talk with us. I believe they're coming two more times to kind of discuss more specific plans that we can make. And then I also, today was in a focus group with the two representatives from KLI. I was in the student focus group with some other of my classmates. And just kind of discussing, they asked us a few questions, discussing our own experiences in the school with things surrounding equity. So, yeah, I've been involved with a lot of those things lately.
Great. What are some of the recommendations, some of their thoughts?
So, it was more, within the focus group, they were more asking us our own experiences
and then kind of taking notes on that. So, I think in the future, we'll kind of see, maybe in our next meeting as a large committee, we'll see kind of what they took from those focus groups.
They also observed classes today and talked with teachers and parents. So, I think pulling all that data together, as Sophia's saying, will probably happen in our next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill? Hey, this past Friday, I had an opportunity to meet with Michael Ferret over at Maple Shade when I had a tour of the school. Observed a couple of classes, including robotics and ST math. A lot of good things going on over there, and I look forward to continuing to pop in every so often. And I'll continue to report to this committee. Also, this Wednesday is the MAS-C, MAS-S conference in Hyannis that I'll be attending with Antonella and Gordon, and we'll bring back a report.
Excellent. Thank you. Rich?
I attended a couple athletic events. Our boys soccer team won big, and I guess they're on their way to a tournament game. And unfortunately, our football team did not do as well Friday night. But it was a competitive game. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Similarly to Rich, I was able to make it out to the senior night events for the football team and the cheerleaders on Friday evening. And though they didn't fare so well, it was a nice send-off to the seniors as their last home game.
Nice. Antonella?
No, nothing.
Nothing. Okay. Moving right along, opportunity for visitors to address the committee, seeing none this evening. We will move right along to the ELPS district SMART goals presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to invite the leadership team up to the table, let them get situated. We do have the presentation up on the screens after a little bit of work. And I think it's also in the electronic shared file. This has to be a real test for them, now, to get this stuff out. Because they want the elementaries together, I guess, right? They do. We continue to try to synchronize it as much as possible so that there's not a thousand slides, but you're getting the substance. Okay, yeah. Okay, good. So, this is a look at our SMART goals, both for the district, but then how it is coordinated with the buildings. Certainly, at any point, really, if you want to stop us and ask questions, please do. You've seen drafts of this back when we were doing some professional development and looking at possible goals for the school committee. That was back in late September. Just a quick reminder, Dr. Allen sometimes forgets what a SMART goal is. Actually, he does not forget, but he was giving me a little needle in one of the leadership team meetings whether I should keep this slide or not. These are specific goals that hopefully are measurable and objective, that will contain, but they still challenge us and stretch us relevant and timely. And another key is that as you look and put these goals into place, you need to be thinking about all of your students. District mission, somewhat hasn't changed. We're looking to obviously educate our students today and provide them with the skills to take on the challenges for tomorrow. And we feel if we do this across the district, building not only a safe and nurturing, respectful environment, that's collaborating with all the different constituents, that we will prepare our students with strong 21st century skills, and that they will be able to work collaboratively, think critically, and problem solve as they leave ELPS. Before we get too much further into the goals, we do want to just remind folks that we're now thoroughly into the next-gen MCAS. Go on our legacy MCAS even for the high school. So, all our students are into a new scoring grid or rubric, if you will. And it goes from not meeting expectations all the way to exceeding expectations, but it also has different scaled scores going from 440 to 560. Probably the biggest one that causes our parents and maybe our students as well, some challenge in understanding is partially meeting expectations because it's not a situation where students are not necessarily operating at grade level. It may be a situation where they are still needing to master a few skills that the assessment is looking at. And it's one that crosses over. Let me move to the next slide if you look.
Could you do that one?
Yep.
Sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Under partially meeting expectations.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, wow.
Okay.
That was your question?
Hell. It says, should, it says, "The school in conjunction with the student's parent/guidance should consider."
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that they don't have to do an EPP, that they can just, the parent can decide, I don't want, we don't have to?
The next slide actually will show you that.
Okay.
Okay. So, this gives you an idea of where the legacy scoring was. If you look in the middle there, legacy equivalent scaled score. And our old scoring, you looked at 220, that's where you started needs improvement. If you go all the way over to the right there with the CD status, the competency determination, anywhere where there's a one, whether regardless of whether it's the legacy scoring or the new next-gen MCAS scoring, you still have to do the educational proficiency plan for students.
But the language doesn't say that. It says, "should consider."
It said, "should consider."
Right.
Whether the student needs additional academic assistance. That's not necessarily an EPP. It just may be other interventions and so forth.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't, you don't have to do it.
According to the state, we do, if they're in this.
But that's not the way it's written.
But if you look at the language on the not meeting expectations, it says, "should determine." It's much more powerful.
Right.
It should, that's all, okay.
Right.
So, you're saying it has to be done?
As far as I understand the scoring, if they're scoring within that 455 in ELA to 471, they still have to have an EPP.
Okay, thank you.
I think the "should consider" is where you start to partner on what type of interventions you might put in place or supports you might put in place for a student.
Okay, thank you.
It is confusing, though, Sophia. Certainly worth taking a look at.
So, the school would contact the parents if the student receives a partially meeting expectations, and that was the first time that they?
It was the first time, last two years, first time for high school, last two years, three through eight were getting next-gen scores. And the school sends back their scores?
Yep.
And then that information, you know, "should consider," basically, it says that the parents can call the school to find out more about what might be going on with their child.
But I think that was your question, though. The school doesn't necessarily contact the parents?
No, school sends out the results.
With a partially meeting?
Right. The contact that the school has is the actual results themselves.
Right, okay.
Good?
Yep.
All right. I think Ms. Brown's going to pick up on looking at some of our state assessment results.
The first year, 10th grade across the state took the next-gen ELA officially. And so, we're excited to see that we continue to achieve an ELA. We have less than 1% of students not meeting, and we're in the target range for growth. We have 67% meeting or exceeding expectations. So, our challenge is just to continue to move students towards the left of the chart, towards meeting and exceeding. We have identified more challenges in writing than in reading. And so, we're looking at developing a course in argumentative writing, not only for high school teachers, but for grades three to 12.
And the target range, if you remember, for growth percentile was, you're looking to hopefully be in that 40th to 60th percentile somewhere in that range.
This is in math, it's hard to read from here, but 61% are meeting or exceeding. So, we're still above the state. And we're continuing again, like the ELA, to try to push towards the left-hand side of the chart. But the high school is utilizing Albert IO and iXL, which are both tools to help personalize learning and identify and address gaps in math understanding, so that we can really pinpoint what's going on with each student.
And one of the things that I know Ms. Brown's mentioned, but if you notice on all three charts, warning and failing, you're at 1% or less, which is really pretty incredible. But now, it's still continuing to move across to the left of that graph.
Have there been any questions from families as to how these types of labels, like around the partially meeting expectations, have aligned to report card grades? Because now, this will be like the first time that something like partially meeting expectations could appear, which is kind of a tricky one, especially to navigate.
Right.
Because depending on where in that spectrum you fall, how that's equating to if their kid was getting a B, or their kid was getting potentially a failing grade.
So, you're talking about at the high school?
Yeah. Well, I mean, any grade, but just because this is your.
Because just standard-based grading for the elementary schools, and then?
It'll be different.
Yeah. So, this is the first year for the ELA in math? I'm not sure. Any questions?
No, we haven't received any questions from any.
Just because as the scale changes from the state, and especially because at the high school, teachers wouldn't have necessarily known how their kids were going to fare.
Right.
So, as that changes, it's just an interesting indicator to think about how that equates to the report card grades that would lead that trail towards potentially a partially meeting or not.
Right.
Just curious.
And it'll be interesting, Sid, just as both have just said, this is the first time for the high school.
Yeah.
And this is the grading, the grading terms just ended. So, possibly that question, you know, we get that question in the next week or two as report cards go home? I don't know that we've gotten it at?
We face that question from time to time when we put kids into tier math or tier reading, because we'll get a call and they'll say, "Well, you know, my kid has a B minus in English." And we'll say, "Yeah, but their I-ready is this, their MCAS is this," you know? And obviously, it's, we want our grading practice to align with this as much as possible, but it's not possible to be perfect. So, we do face that question from time to time, and, yeah, we're used to talking about it, but, and then follow up with the teachers.
Exactly. It's a great question in terms of just reflection. As we, you know, this is a whole new scoring scale, and as we look at it, they've changed the bar in terms of what once was proficient now is in that partially meeting expectations. So, it changes it for everyone.
And it certainly changes the balance for teachers where effort and hard work can bring your grade up, you know? So, that's where we kind of have to misalign it sometimes.
Great.
Could you do a back one for the science?
Sure.
So, science is still legacy, they're working on the next generation.
Why does it say 2015 to 2019? Is it 20, are those our scores for 2019, grade nine?
No, it's, yeah, it's 2019.
Yes.
2015 should be gone.
Okay. That's very impressive, 91, 91 proficient or advanced?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
So, the aggregate results, three through eight ELA, as you look, now, similar to what you just pointed out on the high school slide, this actually is looking at the last three years. And so, you see that as you go across that we're relatively steady with meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. The unfortunate thing is that it's almost as though we're plateauing both in our students who are not meeting expectations and our students who are exceeding. We hit that 8% the last two years, but we haven't continued to move up in that regard. And so, some of the things that we're looking at this year, some that Ms. Brown's already mentioned in terms of I-ready and some of these other quicker-hitting assessments, we might be able to hopefully get a better idea faster during the school year as to where our students are struggling.
Mr. Smith, look at 2019. We have 60% either exceeding, correct?
Yeah, exceeding or meeting.
Adding, adding eight. Comparing it to the state, there's no state, obviously.
So, these numbers are actually above similar, but we thought it would be better to compare to ourselves.
Right. You don't have what the state did?
I don't have the state numbers right here.
Okay.
One of the things that?
We're above the state.
Yeah.
It's just that, yeah, so this comparing itself against ourselves.
Okay, I understand.
And we'll probably do that as we move forward with the high school, have comparing against ourselves. Another element to just highlight is that your mean SGP is 50. It's right in the center of that target range. So, that's something we want to continue to see, staying in that target range, hopefully moving up towards the 60 percentile. In terms of math, you see some similar type results, although, yes, we're seeing roughly 60% in exceeding or meeting expectations. We still see that sort of plateau effect with 6% on either side, whether exceeding or on the other side, the not meeting. So, those are things we have to start to look at and see how we continue to identify what challenges our students have and how we move forward. So, we're seeing more come to the left of the graph.
What does, are these scores reflective of the new program we put in, the Eureka program?
These scores certainly would have, Eureka would have impacted, Eureka's been here for a number of years. However, the AVMR work and the ST math work probably would not be reflected. And so, that's where I think we may see some real growth and some real achievements over towards the left of the graph. And science, in this case, we did have the state, because this is a relatively new situation. And so, you see, we're achieving above the state, but we're still seeing that not meeting expectations of around 6%, which is something we want to certainly start to look at and move students out. But it takes some of the tools that we're using now to identify where these challenges may be and how students are progressing with those different situations. So, just a quick summary as we leave sort of the data and moving into the specific goals. So, our aggregate scores, both in three through eight and at the high school, we do continue to achieve well in ELA, math, and science, with all three showing high rates of students in the meeting and exceeding expectation categories when you compare with the state average. Our growth for grades three through eight is staying in that target range, a 40th to 60th percentile for ELA and math. Growth for ELHS was in the target range also in that 40th to 60th percentile for ELA and math. Those are some of the things you saw on those charts. That lower percentage, we pointed out, where you have 1% in all three of the assessments, ELA, math, and biology, is pretty impressive. Also, on the other, sort of as you're looking this, looking at this with more scrutiny, state averages show slightly higher percentage of student scoring solely in the exceeding expectations. So, that's something that we really need to be looking at. Our students, I feel, should be scoring in that exceeding expectations, and that's something that we need to continue to dig in on. Percentage students scoring in the not meeting expectations, at least in the grades three through eight, we're seeing that's kind of remained the same for three years, and that's something we also need to be looking at as we not only dig in this year in our goals, but as we continue to use this assessment. So, that takes us to our first SMART goal. This is the district SMART goal, and it's not incredibly changed from last year. We're still really focusing in on making sure that we're supporting the whole child, which means academics, social-emotional ed, education, excuse me, and cultural responsiveness. But one of the things that we're really focusing in on, and a lot of it will be seen tomorrow as we have a full professional development day, is that we have to all understand how we're integrating both the academic and the social-emotional education. That's not something that just is on the periphery or as an add-on. It's something that we should be doing all the time in our, in our lesson plans with our students in whatever we're doing, you're combining those. Just give you a moment to think of your question.
Two of our most popular PD sessions that people have been signing up for, one is Understanding and Applying Trauma Anxiety-Focused Strategies Through Behavior Lens, and another is Creating Safe Spaces for Learning, and those are both social-emotional focused.
So, as we look at some of the key action steps, one of the key action steps is actually Sophia was talking about earlier when she was sharing, is that we do have our district Equity and Diversity Steering Committee operating again this year. And they're working with a group called the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. That's a partnership that we think will certainly be beneficial for the steering committee, but definitely also be beneficial with the work we're doing for the entire district. And so, that group has already begun, not only its work with the steering committee, but as Sophia was saying, has begun working with parents, teachers, and students. And that's going to be continuing out through the school year. And so, hopefully, within the next few months, we're going to start to have action steps that we can take as a district and then also take at the building level. We're also going to continue as a leadership team and as a district, not only strengthening the partnerships that we have, those would be partnerships, say, with the district attorney's office, partnerships within town, whether it's the police department, fire department, IT department, Department of Public Works, as well as partnerships that were relatively new last year, such as the one with Bay Path University. And that's actually something that Dr. Welsh is probably almost on a weekly basis in contact with Bay Path and seeing how, not only can we support them, but how can they support us? Because all of this, as you know, takes more than just the school system to make it truly successful.
And just really quickly, I'll be participating, Bay Path is going to have their psych visit from the Department of Ed for their accreditation and so forth, and I'll be participating in that as a representative of our district, so.
Couple other key action steps that we've been talking about is really focusing in on embedding these competencies in what we're doing in the classroom. So, the competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, those are your five competencies of social and emotional education. And it's really understanding how, no matter what content you teach, you can start to embed that into your lesson plans. We're looking at how we best support our teachers in understanding that and in starting to make that happen. And so, we're going to be looking at all the professional development that we provide as well as getting their feedback as we provide it. So, starting tomorrow with the first full day, we should have a good idea of at least how they're receiving tomorrow's workshops.
Is that something that our administrators, when they go to observe a class, have on their grid? I mean, that was, could Dr. Allen say to me when I meet with them, "Rich, I can tell you when I observe six classes, I saw self-management in three, four classes, I saw decision-making, et cetera." Is that something that's tangible?
Okay. I think it's something that as we continue to discuss it, it should be something that we're able to discuss as easily as that. But I think it starts with the professional development, making sure that our teachers are comfortable and understanding how do they do this? That's, that's the big piece. Because we've done this, we've done certain things for years, but it's always been sort of that add-on piece. And now, it's getting down to how do we integrate this? If I'm a science teacher, how might I integrate some of these competencies just in my lesson plan? And it's not something that's incredibly challenging to do. It's just actually taking it from sort of, oh, it's something we talk about, and just making it a more direct focus as you lesson plan. Oh, I'm actually with this lab, I'm starting to build relationship skills and giving them the opportunity to do, to master responsible decision-making in terms of operating that lab with their lab partner.
I guess the penny bottom of that would then be, besides then just tracking survey data, can we consider as an additional measure ways that we're then looking for impacts of that professional development in classrooms? So, just as like you described, like how do we then work to support around that so that we're seeing more than just survey data from educators? Not that that's not valid, but then wanted to make sure that it hits the classroom.
What are you seeing in classrooms?
We do a survey at the high school with our students. So, we just did one about a month ago, and it's, it's called "How You're Doing." And so, we try to build in questions that kind of give us a gauge on how you're doing academically, what do you feel? How you're doing socially, emotionally? Do you feel safe in a classroom? Do you feel that you have a voice in the classroom? Are you given opportunities to be creative, which all kind of tie to the social-emotional competencies? So, we're going to, we started it at the end of last year. We're going to do it, we did it at the start, and then we'll probably do it mid and then at the end of the year. So, we'll have some data in terms of how that's tracking with the kids, at least.
Can I just say that when you, when Rich was saying how, you know, can we see it in the classrooms? I think it's really easy to see all of that. It's hard to present it to you. It's hard to put in, you know, some kind of a data form, but it's easy for us to give you examples, which I think is why you guys upcoming spend time in our schools is going to be so important, because you should be able to see it in action. It's really hard for us to show it in pictures and charts.
I was going to, I was going to say exactly that, because I was going to put you on the spot, Bill. So, when you were in classrooms, like, could you stand here and say or not say, you know, social awareness was observable, relationship skills were observable, responsible decision-making was observable?
Oh, definitely, you could see where these things are, you could see examples to everybody's point. They are going on in the classrooms, so don't feel bad about putting me on the spot.
Yeah.
Because it was, they, these are keen observations that were very easily, easy to identify.
Yeah.
So, the work is taking place. And, no, no, but I think it's, it's, as they're saying, it's important to us to go in, because I agree, it's, to Elaine's point, it's tough to put it on a piece of paper, but to go in and see it.
No, I know. I just meant it's?
No, I get it.
I think it's easy to see and just hard to?
And it was, in my experience Friday, it was very easy to see.
But I think to the point, the original point, these aren't conversations that the teachers are used to having with us.
Right.
And so, we have to now build that so it becomes familiar. It's something that they are used to discussing with us and used to talking about and identifying themselves.
Right, and how you treat them back to the PD.
Right. Until they can identify it themselves, it's not going to happen in their plans. And then, something that we started last year, but we certainly want to continue to do, is we're using our operational budget differently, as you know, the last few years. And so, it's tracking, what are we spending the social-emotional money on at the schools? And then taking a look at some of the state survey data that they do in the spring, which is that focal area.
Because the budget is one of our big responsibilities, the school committee. Am I correct in saying that we have an SEL teacher at Meadowbrook, which is a Park School in East Sumo High School?
Yes, and actually at Mountain View, although?
We have the program, is that the transition program?
That's the transition program, right.
What do we have an adjustment counselor?
We have adjustment counselors at the high school, we have an adjustment counselor at the middle school, we have a licensed adjustment counselor, though, I don't know if she's called that, at Meadow, is she? Okay. At Meadowbrook.
Chairman Betsy?
Yes.
And a B C B A.
And somewhere in the back of my mind, do we bring some agency in to meet with kids? So you're stealing some thunder a little bit there.
Sorry, Bill.
Move on along. You're reading ahead. We are, yeah. Good foreshadowing. I'll hand it off, actually, to the elementary...
So what we've done as an elementary team is we've taken the three goals from this presentation tonight, and we've created a slide for each goal and a presentation that reflects each school connected to that goal, and each individual principal will present each goal or each slide. So my goal, or my slide to present for our elementary school, is supporting the whole child. So Maple Shade is beginning to lead and improve a multi-tiered support system in our school, so if you haven't heard about M T S S, it's kind of a newer educational term for supporting the whole child really well. It's a DESI-recommended approach for teaching and learning that focuses on the whole school, every classroom, and each child. Strong components of this approach include, but are not limited to, knowing and teaching the social-emotional learning competencies, strong in-school and after-school curriculum and programming, evidence collection and review, equity, inclusive practices, mentoring, partnerships, restorative practice, universal design for learning, and tiered academic and social-emotional support. So it's a lot to digest and to dive into, and we don't expect ourselves to be exemplary at this right out of the gate. So what we have been recommended to do and have started is a M T S S leadership team to begin this important work. We've already had some preparatory meetings for this, and we really want to start as a team to look at student mentor support system and also align social-emotional curriculum in grades three through five. For Meadowbrook School, they're rolling out an additional unit from their second-step curriculum titled Bullying Prevention. The Bullying Prevention Unit uses and builds on social-emotional skills taught in the core second-step program that are known to prevent bullying. The curriculum discreetly teaches students the three Rs, which are up there as recognize, report, and refuse. And these are assembly-style lessons that Mr. Hudson and Mrs. Sheehan facilitate lessons and activities to grades one and two.
So adjustment counselor and B C B A.
Yeah. Students and teachers participate in instruction, video story discussions, and additional activities that foster connection and an environment of safety and respect for all. This year Meadowbrook will collect data through student exit surveys. In addition, as a staff, they are beginning stages of school-wide social-emotional learning implementation. Through staff professional development, they are working toward fostering awareness and defining what social-emotional learning means for their school community, and we will create a shared vision that integrates social-emotional learning. Mountain View has an interesting idea that was proposed to Mrs. Santinello and Mrs. Norma Campbell. So the Mountain View's guidance counselor is, I'm sorry, Mrs. Norma Campbell, their guidance counselor. East Long Meadow High School senior Sophia La...
I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go. Was that a plant?
No.
And teacher Eddie Polk, does he like to see around too? Okay. Wanted to bring high school and elementary school students together to engage in after-school activities aimed at spreading kindness and positivity in our East Long Meadow community. The community kindness program has been a wonderful opportunity to bring together two very different developmental age groups to share time, ideas, and activities. Sophia and seven other seniors, along with Mr. Polk, came to Mountain View after school for an hour and a half in five-session increments to bond with 16 students in grades three through five. This has allowed for positive mentoring relationships for both the Mountain View and high school students. The seniors have planned getting-to-know-you icebreakers, craft projects, discussion groups, and community service activities. Session one will conclude in November, and we hope to continue the program throughout the year with different Mountain View students in each session. The picture at the top left is from their first meeting.
Sophia, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so we've had two, we're going actually this Wednesday again, and so it's been great so far. It's been awesome getting to know the children and just seeing, kind of thinking back to when you were that age and different things that you, like, that I might have struggled with, or some of the other high school students, and then getting to kind of be that mentor figure. And I think it's really powerful, because I feel like as someone that age, it's like, it's kind of helpful to look up to someone who's still in the school system but older than you. So I think that it's just a great opportunity to kind of, like, spread, to learn that being kind is kind of the first thing that you should do before it becomes a kind of harder to make that choice when you're in, like, middle school or high school. The, it becomes harder to make the change to choose kind. But when you're that age, if you can kind of target it, then I feel like it's easier to...
Sophia's been awesome, she planned the whole thing, and she came to us last year with this idea, and she's pretty much doing everything herself. Eddie and I and Norma kind of just sit to the side, and they do everything with the kids, and the kids are loving it.
Very nice. It's an awesome example of mentoring, I'm jealous. I'm going to work on something. Moving on to the middle school.
Okay, so Tim and myself and the staff at Burchland Park Middle School are tasked with a unique challenge in that I believe that if a person lives until the age of 110 years old and are asked to look back on the three most difficult years of their life, they would indicate that those three years of their life would be middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And it's that thought that powers every decision that we make to ensure that that's not the case for our kids at Burchland, knowing that this is a time in their lives when they are the least in control of their own emotions and their own thoughts and their own feelings and the least amount of control of just the circumstances around their own lives. We want to make sure that we provide a rich learning experience that is as fun as possible and fulfilling for them, both holistically and strategically. So as you can see, there are 10 points up there that drive our social-emotional focus I can get to, but first I just want to point out the four pictures that sort of signify the heart of what we do at Burchland. So on the top left, this is a sixth-grade field trip that was recently taken to a team-based ropes course. So right off the bat, as soon as students get here at Burchland Park Middle School, they challenge themselves very physically to be able to work together to overcome a series of challenges. On the top right, this is an example of a new initiative that has been strongly recommended, rather importantly, by Mr. Fedett for the last seven years, and finally this year, Mr. Allen and myself listened, that we finally implemented recess for our sixth-grade students at the tail end of cafeteria, because Mr. Fedett believes that it really speaks to the child and helps them, just give them an additional boost through the day, and we're definitely seeing, we're definitely seeing the benefit of being able to let students just run and play for 10 minutes. The bottom left is a picture of Tim and myself lost at sea, adrift on a pizza raft. This is an example of our Thursday advisory lessons based on feedback that we received from students in a student survey at the end of last year. When asked about student, the Thursday activities, students requested that, they want more opportunities for team-building, more opportunities to look inward and talk about themselves and their own interests. And so that's something that we thought about, and so we wanted to create more engaging advisory lessons to address the social-emotional competencies, and this is an example of a team-building activity in which students had to save Mr. Allen and myself from being lost at sea through working together as a team. And then the bottom right is an example from our health class, that grade eight, that grade eight's health class. So those are just four illustrations of what occur on a daily basis at Burchland Park Middle School. So as we can see, going through the bullets, a weekly advisory session, like I just mentioned, this is something that is constantly being revised in order to address what the students are looking for, and, you know, so there's a balance of what students want and what students need. So, you know, if my, you know, during the, one of the conversations that we had was, you know, what to give students? Do we just give everything that they want? The answer is no, because if I listen to my daughter every morning during the summer of what she wanted for breakfast, she would have ice cream. Sometimes you just have to make a decision for them for what's good. So we balance what they need with what they want in order to create a rich learning experience. And then we have student surveys two times throughout the year. One will be launched in December, and one will be launched at the end of the year. We're able to look to see where students, how they're feeling about their own learning and their own middle school experience. The one in December is incredibly important, because it allows the teacher to be able to analyze the results and tailor the instruction to meet the needs of the students as they have them. I am working with the staff, we are reading a book specifically on trauma and ACEs. The book is written by a licensed therapist and a high school principal, so it is a perfect blend of the therapy and the grit of school, so it's not written in a vacuum from someone on high that doesn't understand the daily grind of educational life. And every one of those sessions begins with a concrete social-emotional strategy that a teacher can implement in his or her classroom, then followed by a deeper theoretical conversation in order to build the empathy when working with middle school students. We have our students' assistance meetings, so when there is a student that is struggling in some regards on a team, our team is then able to bring that forward, and we're able to have a series of meetings in which we're able to build action plans to support that student around their areas of deficit. We are fortunate to have a social-emotional program in our building, and we work very closely with Mr. Nesbit in order to support the social-emotional needs of our students. Our student support team is incredibly tight. It says here we meet one to two times per quarter. What's that? It's with specials. And with specials, and we're able to just meet with the specials' teachers to fill them in on what otherwise they might not get from their team counterparts who are able to meet more frequently, so we're able to fill them in on the social-emotional needs of our students. We have our chill zone, we have student mentors, we practice mindfulness in the building, so we're able to address a lot there. Much like Mr. Fedett said earlier, we have an M T S S team in which we're able to really tailor education in all aspects to the students that need it the most. And as always, especially with middle school, we want to crack down against bullying as much as possible and just eradicate that, so that when students walk into the building, they feel both social, emotionally and physically safe at all times.
Okay, so, East Long Meadow High School, we have four action steps connected to how we're going to be supporting the whole child. Our primary, and our primary focus this year is really working with developing and implementing our S E L program at the high school with our newly hired S E L teacher. And within that S E L program, there are three prongs or parts to it, if you will. The first one is our S E L teacher, he is Mr. McGregor, he's servicing our students with those S E L I E P goals or 504 goals that are outlined for them, and what he's really worked to do this year is formalize that process for the work towards those goals through data collection, documenting meetings, and making sure that those students are demonstrating progress towards those goals through weekly check-ins, sometimes daily check-ins, depending on the student's specified goal. He's also doing daily processing with students when we use it, and similar to how Burchland uses it, where we also have it identified as our chill zone, where students, you know, if they have those moments of high anxiety, stress, drama, whatever it might be, he's processing with a number of students daily to work through those different situations. And then the last piece for him is he's also teaching two, I'm sorry, two wellness classes at the high school, where students who have those goals written into their I E Ps or 504s are assigned to those classes, and he works on different, the different competencies that have been outlined thus far this evening. Our next action step is connected to our advisory program at the high school. This year we've tried to make sure that we've balanced it between the student choice days, which we've started last year, and also developing a curriculum that is being built collaboratively between our guidance department and the administration. This year we're running four of each, so there are four student choice days, and there's going to be four set curriculum days, and we've had one of each so far. As far as the guidance model goes, and that's what the third step is up there, it's a little small from here, but really, we talked to you guys last spring about how we were revamping the roles of our guidance counselors in terms of what their strengths were and what they would be working with the students on this year. Right now, we're currently developing monthly goals with our guidance counselors in terms of what they're going to be working on within each of their respective roles, and it also does outline how, you know, we are providing supports to our struggling students in as many ways as we possibly can. So I think it was alluded to a little bit by Mr. Rocherel and Mr. Smith earlier, in terms of working with River Valley to bring in the in-school therapy program to our students. I don't know if you want to add more to that piece, but we have them, we have met with them this year, and they are scheduled to formally come into the school at the end of November. Right now, we are putting applications out to our families, we've met with River Valley to work with them in terms of their hiring process, and by the end of November, we're hoping to have that program fully implemented at the high school.
Just to add to that, so River Valley Consulting is a group that has licensed therapists, and they've been working with schools in the area for the last few years, probably most notably, and probably the longest, the Chickaby Public Schools uses them, but I think they're also expanding into Hadley, South Hadley, and Hatfield.
Hampshire Regional.
And Hampshire Regional, thank you. So school systems partner with them and create a memorandum of understanding in terms of how you will partner with them, and the key is that we're doing all the support that we've continuously done and have even improved on through our SAM meetings and through our S E L support, but it's taking that next step where a group can come in and provide that additional licensed therapy that often gets recommended at team meetings, but you're leaving the family out there sort of on their own to go find that. This actually provides licensed therapists to come in, and as we can build a caseload for them while continuing the supports that we have in place, they would be at potentially all five schools for a day during each week, where they'd be meeting with students.
Yeah, so...
That'd be one of the new partnerships we're talking about.
Yeah, so I think right now, when we spoke to them last, they were tentatively looking to hire up to two positions to support the East Long Meadow School District, potentially more depending on how many services were sought. The last piece up here provides staff with opportunities to explore and learn about the four competencies, so we are looking to provide a PD for our staff in March, which I believe Dr. Flanagan is going to explain a little bit more.
Yeah, so when we were going over our SMART calls with our staff, when we came to number four, the S E L competencies, a lot of our staff were not very familiar exactly what those competencies mean and how you implement, and I think you hit it perfectly, like, what does that look like in our teacher perspective? And so what we're bringing in, I don't know if you've ever heard of Brienne Brown, she's a pretty, pretty famous bestselling author and also does a lot with resiliency and creativity and risk-taking, and how do you build that sense of bravery so that you can be successful? So she's kind of translated that into an educational component, it's called Daring Classrooms, and the gist of it, and that quote that I put up there from her, I think kind of hits it perfectly. Students deserve one place where they can rumble with vulnerability and their hearts can exhale. So when you talk about S E L in a classroom, particularly in a high school classroom, what it looks like is kids are engaged and they're not fearful to share, they're not fearful to collaborate, they're not fearful to take risks, because the teacher has provided that emotional safety in the classroom to allow them to kind of expand their learning. So the workshop that we're bringing in in March is really a component of daring classrooms, so helping our teachers understand as a, as an instructor, as an educator, what are some things that they can tangibly do to improve that emotional... things that they can tangibly do to improve that emotional safety in the classroom so that the students can do those things that we quantify as really 21st century learning? So, it kind of goes hand in hand. So, that's in March that's going to be happening.
One quick question, Mr. Page. You alluded to our SEL teacher.
Yes.
You mentioned the populations, 504 and special education. My understanding is that SEL teacher is there for all students, correct?
Yeah, so there's three parts to the support that he's providing. First, the primary support that I referenced, or the first support I referenced there was making sure that the students have those SEL goals, outlining their IEPs or 504s, that he is meeting with those students to, you know, check, make sure they're making progress towards those goals. But he also does a lot of daily processing with students across the spectrum, across all student populations in terms of, you know, working with them to reduce stress, anxiety, whatever it might be.
Any student could access the SEL.
And we have students going in and out of the room all the time from all walks of life. I don't know if Sophia can speak to, not necessarily seeking him out, but just kids you may have.
Well, yeah, I actually, I met with him a few meetings ago before, like prior to coming to one of our committee meetings because I kind of wanted to see, I just basically interviewed him.
Okay.
Because I wanted to see what was going on in the room and stuff. And we talked for a while and he, one of the main things he mentioned was that there are a lot of students who come there, who go there frequently during the day. And I thought that that was great because there, those might be certain students who before didn't really know where to go, but then now having this room as a place where they can go to. And I think so that's being utilized a lot by the students who kind of need that place, which I thought was great.
So, all of this really becomes sort of a tricked balance, which certainly anyone who's been in education knows because we started off the presentation talking about accountability and then you're talking as you get into how are you supporting your students and your staff around that situation to be able to feel secure and take risks and make mistakes because that's where the best learning happens. And so, it's finding that balance and that's something that we need to continue to do in our conversations and our professional development so that we can do both. Because if we can do this for all our students, we should be hitting the exceeding expectations and meeting expectations with higher percentages. It's making sure that we're doing this for all our students. This takes us into the next SMARCO, which is talking about making sure that we're engaging our students in all areas with 21st century learning experiences. And that's not just about technology. Yes, we've launched a one-to-one program, which is going very well, but it's now also understanding how and when you're going to use those machines and also identifying what technology or machine is going to be best for this task that I'm about to take on. And it's more about the skill sets that you're teaching possibly with using those different tools such as collaborating and thinking critically and problem solving as teams and so forth. So, some of the things that we'll be looking to do is certainly making sure our teachers understand how they can integrate the Chromebooks into their daily lessons, but it's also a situation where it shouldn't overtake your entire lesson, although it's finding that balance. And so, that's going to come through not only feedback that we get from students, as I know Sophia offers feedback quite a lot on many different things, one-to-one program is something that she's provided feedback before, but it's also taking a look at how are we utilizing the tools that we have and how is the professional development supporting them in creating these 21st century learning environments? Also, we want to make sure that we're utilizing some of the software packages and as you know, over the last few years, we've been weeding out certain software packages that maybe are underutilized or are no longer supporting students in the best way possible. But some of the ones that we've recently been trained on and been talking about with all of you have been things like ST Math, recently iReady and Albert I.O. and seeing how will that support our students and hopefully start to personalize education and make it easier for teachers to do that. As we talk about it a lot, but we haven't necessarily made it easy for our teachers to go from the theoretical and the discussion to actually making it happen for a group of 20 to 25 students in front of them. So, a big theme you're going to see through all of, what we're discussing in all of our goals is how do we support our teachers in doing this? And so, it's continuing to provide that professional development, to make sure that professional development is targeted. And it's also this year, which a few people have talked about, is getting all of you into our buildings more frequently and maybe even focusing in on one building so you get to be part of these presentations as we near, say, the February mid-cycle. Build the graphs and the slides with us. So, moving to elementary schools and taking a look at how we're helping create that instructional, 21st century instructional environment.
So, Renee and I all co-present, but I'm going to be doing the talking today. So, we're going to focus on the instructional practice and with, at the elementary level, we really try to focus on innovative practices with all of our schools. So, I'm going to start with Meadowbrook. Makerspace is a hands-on approach to build critical thinkers through problem solving, collaboration, and engineering. Students at Meadowbrook School have access to mentor texts in our Makerspace library, challenge cards that are differentiated by grade levels, two Makerspace cards filled with engineering supplies, and a multitude of tech and non-tech coding games. It's a time for students to use their creativity and problem-solving skills to collaboratively work together to come up with a prototype, test their prototype, and make a final product. The emphasis is not so much the final product, but the process. The top right-hand picture shows students creating a sturdy structure or bridge to get, so we actually have a GG, a little wind-up penguin, so, and the goal is to get GG to cross the structure to correctly. And if you're familiar with ST Math, that's actually what GG is trying to do, solve puzzles to cross the bridge. Okay, and then the next one, Maple Shaped School is excited to be offering Project Lead the Way course to 100% of their students this year. Project Lead the Way is a grant-funded program that trains teachers and provides them with high-quality curriculum in computer science, biomedicine, and engineering. All of their students will learn computer programming, coding, forces and interactions, designing solutions to solve complex problems, neuro-investigation and stimulation, infection detection and simulation, robotics and automation, and the science of flight. And lastly, for Mountain View. Mountain View has decided to specifically focus on two of the digital literacy and computer science standards this year. Students will utilize digital tools to manipulate and publish multimedia artifacts while collaborating and presenting to their classmates through the Google platform on their Chromebooks, and the students will identify appropriate and inappropriate uses of technology when posting to social media, sending emails or texts, and browsing the internet through instruction using the Mark Anti-Bullying Curriculum and the Twitter Social Media Intern Program, both coordinated by Amy Pelzik. Students will also continue to use computational thinking while engaging in robotics, computer programming with VEX IQ blocks, coding algorithms to perform robotics functions using Lego EV3s, and developing designs with new technologies. The picture on the top left shows the fourth graders collaborating on coding.
He says here Makerspace during the day or during school?
During the day. We have actual carts where the teachers can bring them into the classroom. Yeah, it's mobile.
So, for Burson Park in this slide, I just want to say the one-to-one initiative has had a great, great start at Burson. We're so grateful to all the work everybody at this table did. We have 600 and something students and only five opted out, so we literally just had everybody walking around with computers. And even for the opt-outs, we have a system where they pick one up every morning. So, it just went from being this big thing that was coming to just being part of the woodwork, literally in like three days. So, we're very lucky there. We are certainly supporting teachers with that, but our teachers were so hungry and ready for that, that they just kind of hit the ground running. It's not that they're waiting for more PD from us. So, we're doing a few separate half-PD days that'll be teacher-driven technology sessions, but for the most part, they just went with it. Also, normally on this slide, I focus a lot on, you know, our coding classes, our, we have the two Makerspaces, we have TechEd hitting more students than ever. So, we really focused on that DLCS and that type of learning the last couple of years and we're still doing all of that. You can see it's number seven, I did put it in there. But if you've seen our goals, this goal has, I think, 16 or 17 action steps because we're really focused on this goal this year. And so, for this slide, I really focused on our core teachers and what we're working with them on so that we can most significantly impact MCAS this upcoming year. So, number one's really important. We're really trying to find ways in our core classes to deliver sort of tier-two instruction within the core classes. So, that's sort of the next frontier for us is when you look out at a class of 28 12-year-olds, you know, and you think you're doing a great lesson, and I'm sure most of my teachers are, but there's still four or five that aren't with you, right? And despite all the efforts. So, what do you do for those four or five? And that's step number one. That's been a big part of our conversations and our work this year. And then, you can sort of go by department here. Our math teachers are implementing standards-based grading, which obviously is a whole new system, and they're also doing the, piloting the Envisions web-based curriculum, so their math work is online now through Pearson Envisions. So, those have been two big initiatives that the math department is working hard on. Our ELA teachers and our sped liaisons are using iReady to start to individualize more like Mr. Smith said, within their core classrooms and within their tutorials to really get kids working exactly where they need to be working, especially when they do station work, having an iReady station. Ironically, Mastery Connect has a revival in my English department and the literacy coach is working with English teachers and weekly, almost weekly, the teachers are telling them the priority standards they're teaching that week and then the literacy coach is pulling on-demand MCAS questions that the teachers never see until they give the assessment in Mastery Connect. And then, the teachers walk home with like the ultimate exit ticket from the week. If you were working on Author's Purpose, your kids take a quick assessment on Friday on Mastery Connect about Author's Purpose, which is exactly what we wanted Mastery Connect to be all these years. It's funny that it's happening now, but really good work by the English department. Social studies teachers were really zoning in on writing. That's being led by Steve Pearson, our literacy coach, and Mr. Martin, who's a former literacy coach. They're really aligning the social studies and English department. And what the social studies department is doing is picking one type of writing at a time and doing a deep dive into how to teach it, how to align better with the ELA teachers. And then, again, getting to that on-demand where instead of teachers creating the assessment, we're, it's arriving, but it's assessing what they ask for it to assess. So, Mr. Martin's actually writing the on-demand writing assignments for the social studies department. So, they'll, they each practice a type of writing for a couple of months and then there's an on-demand assignment, much like MCAS, that also connects to their content. So, that's his, you know, if they're doing narrative, well, then the kids in Ancient Civ have to get a narrative task that's connected to Ancient Civ. So, that's some exciting work. I'm actually working really closely with the science department and what we're trying to do is we're really trying to build a three-year data system because what happens is we do our best in sixth, we do our best in seventh, we do our best in eighth, and then we hope they'll remember all of it on the eighth-grade assessment. And we want to get to the English and math level where we have three years of data before that eighth-grade science assessment. So, what we're doing is we've really looked at all the released items from now two years of Next Gen MCAS and Science, and we're learning how to write two, three, and four-step questions that really demand that you apply your skills rather than just regurgitate. So, two things are happening. The teachers and I are writing these practice questions, these MCAS-like questions, and we're giving them, and then we're blind scoring and calibrating and all of that. And then, at the same time, we're diving into JogNog, which is a great web-based tool that actually provides MCAS questions that my eighth-grade users and my TechEd classroom uses. So, we're hoping at the end of this year, we'll take the MCAS, the multiple-choice questions from JogNog and the long questions that we've written, that we might actually be able to build a three-year sort of practice MCAS so that we're not guessing in eighth grade and so that we can provide intervention science in eighth grade if we actually have data that's three years. So, that's exciting. Specials teachers, we're sort of balancing with them. We want it to still be specials, right? Our young adolescents need a break and need to go just be creative. But where we're telling they can connect to improvement on MCAS is through point evidence explanation. We call it a P chart, goes very well in middle school. And so, we're really pushing specials teachers to get past, we've gotten everybody, not just us, everybody's gotten good at make a point, give some evidence. It's that explanation, that connector where everybody, not everybody, but a lot of students have trouble explaining how that evidence goes back to that point. So, we're working with specials teachers to really get their kids, whether it's in gym class, whether it's in coding, whether it's in music, to find a way to get better at explaining. Number seven is all that other stuff we talked about. Our Makerspace has been alive this year, maybe more than any year ever, and it's the least administrations ever been focused on it. So, it's great to see that that really has roots of its own now and sort of growing itself. And then, number eight is something, you know, Connor and I are in year seven at Burson Park and we've only done this on really small levels and actually hasn't been received well when we've done it by parents, but we're going to try and do it better this year, which is now that we have iReady with really good data and really good practice and now that we have, you know, we've done three years of Next Gen MCAS and we're starting to understand it better, we have to just start to explore how do we do, whether it be MCAS Academy in April, like it's done in, like in Springfield, they have a lot of kids that are at risk that are in health over vacation, whether it's Saturday schools, whether it's a better use of tutorial for certain students as MCAS gets closer, we just, you know, I don't want to become a school that only focuses on MCAS, but I do want to have another jump in our scores. So, we're really going to take a deep dive into what we can do with the last month or two based on all the data we have to hit the kids that need it and give them the boost they need. So, if you look on the right, that's a civics teacher who for a week decorated his classroom like a tavern and he was a redco with me, debated incredible debates on different things that happened before the Revolutionary War. The middle question is kids in the Makerspace in eighth grade designing thermal cups, they actually tested them. Bottom left is sixth-grade scientists and bottom right is what an English class looks like where kids are writing an analytical essay using the one-to-one.
So, at the high school, we continue to help our teachers develop 21st century learning, not only in instruction, but in curriculum and in our assessments. 21st century learning is kind of hard to describe and hard to really kind of unpack. It's not something that you can buy in a box and roll it out to teachers and say, "Try it." In order for 21st century learning to really take place, teachers really need the time to collaborate and the professional development opportunities to engage with it. And so, some of the things that we're doing at the high school is, as you know, our teachers all have to create professional practice goals for the year and that's something that they do voluntarily, they work collaboratively with each other. This year, 85% of our teachers chose as their professional practice goal, something to do around 21st century learning, and 42% of those teachers are specifically doing something with technology. If you look at that picture on the right, one of the things that we encourage our teachers, but also our administrators to do, is take part and get out there and see what other schools are doing. So, this is the WPI Project Lead the Way Networking Conference that I attended with Michael Ferret and a couple of my teachers. And we learned a lot about what high schools are doing in terms of what that means, what 21st century learning looks like in the classroom. But the other benefit of going out and seeing what's going on is at this particular conference, the presenters were businesses, local businesses in the Boston area, and they were pretty much begging us to embed more 21st century learning skills into our classrooms. And so, I think as administrators, the best way we can support that is providing those professional development opportunities and giving students opportunities to play with it. So, for example, I just had last week, two of my math teachers went out and they did a professional development at the Mass Cube, which is like the, kind of the Academy Awards of instructional technology, gives you a chance to kind of see what's going on in the entire state. And so, the two teachers came back and they said, "We want to build a roller coaster in the hallway," and it involves a lot of skills in terms of physics, mathematical computation, as well as creativity. And those are the kind of things that I think as administrators, we have to support is when teachers come with us with these great ideas, find the money and the wherewithal to help them get it done. One of the things that has been a great benefit to the high school, it continues to be, is Jeff Zulch, who is our instructional technology specialist. He does the embedded technology, but one of the things I think he does best is he helps teachers understand the marriage between technology and 21st century learning because they're not the same. because they're not the same. And so for example, for our December PD day, we're going to, there's a documentary that was done that I think is quintessential 21st century learning, is called Most Likely to Succeed, and it highlights a high school that is designed simply based on hands-on learning. And so we're going to take a look at that and see how it applies to 21st century learning within our own building. And then one of the things Jeff is going to challenge our teachers to do is, have you ever seen that show, I think it's called Home Makeover? It's some kind of HGTV show. So the idea is, is that our teachers will, you know, they'll get a little bit of understanding what 21st century looks like, and then they're going to be challenged to take an existing lesson and utilize technology. So Jeff will be giving them a kind of a menu of different tools, technology tools that they can use to enhance those lessons, to make them more collaborative, to make them more creative, to give students the opportunity to do more problem solving. So encouraging our teachers in terms of professional development and giving them the time to kind of collaborate is, I think, very key when you're talking 21st century learning. Also, as much as possible, trying to model it and utilize those skills in our classroom. And I think the best example of that is the examples I just mentioned, but also that picture there you see on the right is our, sort of helped us. And what started out as just a place where computers can get fixed has turned into so much more than that. So last week, a couple of the kids came to see me, and I thought it was really interesting. So they fixed computers, but they came to see me, they wanted to meet with me, Mr. Quimby and Mr. Zilch, because they wanted to pitch a more efficient way to run the student help desk. So they were talking about how the input-output is just not working, and there's got to be better ways to keep track of the data, and the public customer service piece is lacking. So it went from, you know, the idea of fixing computers, to now they're talking business skills, they're talking problem solving, they're talking about leadership, which is really what 21st century is all about. So that program is developing, but I think the kids are getting a lot out of it. We continue to maximize the Chromebooks for these purposes. If you were to go in the high school, I think you could see in pretty much every classroom on a regular basis, students are using it. Again, we're trying to encourage the use of it not just to keep notes, not just to do PowerPoints, but to utilize as a resource for collaboration, for research, for creativity and all those skills. So we're making a lot of headway, and I think I echo what Tim said, we're very grateful that the high school has had that opportunity, and thank everybody that was responsible for that because it's really made a difference.
Yeah. I just want, so in a few of my classes, like the Chromebooks have actually made a huge difference with not what we do, but kind of like how we do it. So specifically in my Latin class, which might be surprising, but in my Latin class, we're actually using the Chromebooks so that like, as a class, we can work together to translate, on a Google Doc, we work together translating, like, we read different books right now, we're reading Cupid and Psyche. And so we work together to translate that. So then if there's something that you're confused on, like, one of your classmates can, if you leave a comment saying you're confused on this one part of the translation, one of the classmates can answer the question for you or help you with the translation. So that's just something that we weren't able to do before without the Chromebook stuff.
That's good to hear.
And then this final goal, kind of brings it all together, that we want to make sure that we're continually learning throughout, not only all the grades, but every day, learning in different ways, learning from each other, and that's not just students, that's staff as well. Because we've been talking about how we support our staff in doing all this, which means they have to be lifelong learners as well. And then, in order to make sure that we are prepared for changes in the state assessment system, we know we have to keep up on ever-changing standards and frameworks and making sure that we're aligning our curriculum with that.
So about five to six years ago, we did extensive curriculum maps, and so now with some of the revisions that happened a few years ago with Massachusetts State Standards and just as good practice, we need to start this process again. So working with principals, three or five, we started looking at priority standards, and just to start looking more at creating those scope and sequences and determining the priority standards so we all can have a common focus on what we're really prioritizing in terms of the standards.
Are those priority standards also based on, especially with three or five MCAS data? And what are you seeing as trends across like domains?
It's a collaborative effort too, but yes.
Hopefully by continuously putting a focus on it and having the discussions, that translates into what they're actually putting together as lesson plans and reader plans.
How proud of my age, we still do curriculum maps?
So the curriculum maps that we have right now are, for some folks, still living documents, and in other places, we haven't looked at them for a long time. But the idea is, it doesn't have to necessarily be completely fleshed out, but it is nice to know where you're going.
Right. So other action steps are making sure that as we continue to implement the one-to-one program, that we're looking at how we're providing different opportunities, such as the one Sophia was talking about in her Latin class, and that we're getting back into a direct conversation, and I think Dr. Allen mentioned it, with our teachers around digital literacy and computer science standards. Those are standards that have been around, those are standards that we've discussed. We do have opportunities throughout all grade levels for our students to start learning and mastering those standards, but having direct conversations about them, obviously the-
Fire.
Yeah. Sorry.
Do you do? I don't think it's a drill.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back. Had a brief fire alarm, it was just an alarm, nothing to be concerned about, and we'll continue on with the presentation.
I'm glad we modeled how to leave the building right away, in a very orderly fashion.
Safety check passed.
So we're looking at our goal for continuous learning and achievement, and we're handing off to the schools, starting at elementary level.
So this is our final slide as an elementary team, and just to review, we decided to pick things that we're all doing together and highlight how they're happening in each of our buildings. Obviously, we have a lot of other action steps and a lot of other things, but we're just focusing this time on similar things that we're working on. So iReady, AVMR, and ST Math are three of the standards-based instructional and assessment programs that all three of us are using in our buildings. Mountain View piloted the iReady assessment last year for reading and math, and teachers found it to be a much more informative and accurate tool than the previously used STAR assessment. Now, all three elementary schools are using iReady rather than STAR as the primary formative and summative assessment tool. Students at Mountain View and Maple Shade take the diagnostic test twice, the beginning and the mid-year, and teachers can use the iReady growth assessments throughout the year to inform their instruction. Meadow Brook takes the diagnostic three times because they don't take MCAS in the spring. And teachers can also use the growth assessments at appropriate intervals there. iReady is a better tool for many reasons, but a few examples include the incredibly detailed reports that teachers can generate and the reports that we can provide to parents, the presentation of student intervention groupings based on the standards, and the online instruction that is based at each student's particular progression through the standards, which teachers can use as a learning center while they are working with other students in small instructional groups. And the teachers can monitor each student's progress as shown in the screenshot at the bottom left. So this is a student in fifth grade with the four standards measured on iReady and math. And obviously, I couldn't put up all the data on the screen, but it shows at what level they're performing in each of those areas. And if they click on the view section, they can get an even more detailed understanding for each standard. iReady recommends forty-five minutes per week for online instructional support. So that works imperfectly with them using it as a center in the classroom. Our teachers are also using ST Math with the students, as that they are at Maple Shade. It's a grant-funded component to our elementary math program that teaches students to solve curriculum-aligned problems in a visual and conceptual format. That is what's pictured in the top left. Our teachers utilize the data from the points where students struggle to teach problem-solving with specific mathematical concepts, visual tools, and manipulators to deepen their understanding. Meadow Brook, we will be talking about AVMR, which stands for Advantage Math Recovery. We are all using that in our buildings. At Meadow Brook, students and teachers transform numeracy education through customized and unique professional learning with meaningful assessment and instruction. This year, kindergarten teachers and the three second-grade teachers that were trained last year are using the assessment three times per year and integrating the knowledge gained from both AVMR Course One and student assessments to drive their instruction. The top right picture shows how a kindergarten teacher has integrated number sense routine into daily math practice. As highlighted above, students are looking at numbers in a variety of ways. Teachers are switching to the bottom-up hundreds chart, which allows them to have conversations around numbers in a more meaningful way for students. By the end of this school year, the remaining teachers will participate in AVMR Course One, six first-grade teachers, six second-grade teachers, and two transition teachers. This new learning is helping to shift teacher understanding about best math practices.
So for continuous learning and achievement at Burson, I just really want to focus, and obviously we may be the rest, but I really want to focus especially on number six. We had the training on MTSS this summer as a leadership team, and then I was able to attend the training recently, I forget where we were, somewhere near Worcester, with Mr. Brown and representatives from a lot of the schools. So we're really diving deep into MTSS. We formed an MTSS team, there's ten of us on it. We're currently meeting weekly. We've identified in seventh and eighth grade, sort of our most at-risk learners, we have a list of about a hundred and twenty. We've created a sort of, well, not sort of, we've created a spreadsheet which has on it everything we know about those a hundred and twenty kids, from their MCAS scores to their iReady scores to, we have three buckets of support, academic support, behavioral support, and social-emotional support. And then of course, we have if they're IEP five or four, anything like that. Then we've also worked on what we call our buffet of support, so we have sort of all the things we already do to support kids academically if they need more than just the regular instruction, everything we do to help with social-emotional that's extra, and everything we do with behavioral. And then we've spent time as a group brainstorming, sort of in whiteboard sessions where anything goes, what could we add to our academic supports? What could we add to our social-emotional, what could we add to our behavioral? And then like, for example, at the last meeting last week, we said, okay, we've got to pick one thing from what we wanted to add to, we want, we need to make it exist. So we picked one for each to make it exist. And then basically what we're doing is, we're going a kid at a time now that it's all there, and we're saying, okay, what are this kid's needs and what do we need to ramp up in terms of support? Is it academic, is it behavioral, is it social-emotional? And then once we decide which bucket is, which one are we going to move over here?
Is this one I saw a month ago?
You would have seen the very beginning.
Yeah, but then you showed me the graph.
Yeah, you saw sort of the planning on the whiteboards to drive the creation of the spreadsheet and the team, but yes, absolutely. And just so far, it's really changing how we do this. It's not often that a state training impacts me so much so quickly at the school level. And so what we're doing now, because we realized we can't go one kid at a time with a hundred and twenty kids that need us, we have to get better at this and quicker. So we're giving each kid a team captain. So it could be, like, I'm a team captain for eight or ten kids, Connor, eight or ten kids, each counselor, our ELL teacher, and we're just really problem-solving around each of these kids. And some of them, you get to them and you're like, we actually don't need to give them more right now, right? Like, they have a lot of things going and we just need to monitor. And other kids you get to and you're like, whoa, we haven't done much for them, then throw them in core classes and say, good luck. So that has really evolved our thinking and our planning. And I guess I would say, Connor talked about the SAM meetings, that's the Student Assistance Meetings, that generates from the team, and then problem solves upwards, and then I would argue MTSS is sort of up here, and we're going to problem solve like looking down, and then the real goal will be in a month or two when we unite the two processes. We don't want to do it until the MTSS team is good enough and comfortable enough to show teachers what we've been doing, but when that kind of comes together, that'll definitely be the most cohesive we've ever been at, sort of looking at kids and what they need.
MTSS Multi-Tierred Support System.
You haven't asked that question. That must be from the state, correct?
Yeah.
Sounds like an answer.
Yeah. All the pictures there, that's myself and our DLCS department at Math Cube, that was the conference that Gina talked about. One of my eighth-grade science teachers actually presented that, and we had a great day at that. Then that's Officer Healy doing the Maker Space Project with some sixth graders, and then the bottom, the seventh-grade hands-on science around genetics and frauds and reproduction stuff.
So I'll start off introducing myself. Gary Wright, joined the high school in August. So for our third goal, really, you know, we wanted to focus on a few smaller things. As far as implementing the curriculum guides, I think our lynchpin there is common planning time across all of our core departments. It's not uncommon to walk our halls during certain periods and see math teachers in the same room, English teachers in the same room, teachers collaborating with Jeff Zilch. You know, a lot of the work that they needed to do outside of the school day is happening during the day. They have eighty-four minutes of common planning time a day, and they are, you know, things like Dr. Flanagan expressed, the math team coming down to discuss a new idea with us. These things are all happening during that collaborative planning time. I think a big one that we are focusing on is around a variety of strategies for collecting data, and so we look at our learning expectations, and we're driving our department chairs to come together cross-curricularly and look at these learning expectations. How can we collect work that demonstrates proficiency in these learning expectations and put it on the table in front of multiple departments so that we're calibrating across the school? What does this look like? How do these conversations happen? How does a conversation drive the analysis of the student work and the feedback that a student will get? And once we've established this practice with the department chairs, they will then lead this on Tuesday, their Tuesday department meetings in a similar fashion, establish a learning expectation that the department is focused on, and then no matter what content you teach, you're bringing in a piece of student work that demonstrates some level of proficiency, whether that be a student who's still struggling or a student who may have mastered it. But how does that work demonstrate some of these 21st century learning skills that we're keying in on? And as far as number three, we are, you know, we're challenging our staff to get into the rooms of their peers, have a look at what their colleagues are doing within their content and across content. It's also coming from conversations that we have with educators, things that we think other people need to see, and asking for them to extend an invitation to their colleagues on specific things as well. So that's the work where we have in this, in the school.
That kind of brings us home. All three goals, working integrally around the circle. If we continue to work around that circle, we should be supporting all of our students in the best way possible. Questions, comments, thoughts on the fire drill?
I guess a little confused. I mean, you know, you hear all these effective measures that we're doing, you look at our student growth, which is around forty-four, forty-eight, fifty, but as you said, we're kind of stagnated there at certain levels. I would hope we come back to here-
Not so much in the growth, but more-
I don't know, not the growth, but that's what I'm confused either.
Because the growth is high, but our supports seem to be stagnated, as you all were. I said plateaued.
Plateau.
No, stagnating. And I think that's what we have to start digging in on, is figuring out, you know, similar to what Dr. Allen was saying in terms of bringing that team together and really starting to look at, what else do we know about, you know, Gordon Smith? How do we, what have we done, what works, what are we missing, what other supports can we bring? And it's got to be, all the way around the circle, it's got to be the academic supports, and, you know, it may be a social-emotional piece, it could be a behavioral piece, but we have to look at it from all those different perspectives.
But it's also a moving target, so that's part of the challenge. I view it as a moving target because-
Terms of state assessment or?
Just the-
Students themselves.
The students themselves, because there's so much going on, you know, based on, you know, social-emotional needs. It could be good one day, bad the next, and it's, it's how do you hone in and capture everything and continue to progress?
As we get better at understanding how we best support students, hopefully we're providing that one structure that maybe is not as ever-changing in their lives.
And that's the challenge.
Dr. Flanagan, not meeting the expectations is, is that one student or one percent?
Which I think is probably one student.
Probably one student.
We were actually surprised because the old MCAS and what we took recently are very different, very, very complex compared, in my opinion, to the old version.
Really?
So kind of, was surprised, pleasantly surprised.
Yes, he must have been gratified then.
I mean, you raised the bar.
Oh, definitely.
For everyone.
That was part of the goal.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you, Beck.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Coming back after the fire drill. Okay, now.
Rock and roll.
Okay. Pam's on the screen.
Yeah, they got to help a friend.
Hey, you don't have any slides?
Say, I do not.
Yeah, they're right here.
Right in front of you.
Yeah. Right in front of us.
Fourth quarter report.
So in front of you, you'll see your FY19, the final financial report, fourth quarter, which ended June 30th, 2019. So just as a reminder, the first three quarterly reports are always snapshots of what's going on in the district throughout the fiscal year, and this is the final financial report. So this is what really ended up happening. As a reminder, the budget was $30 million, 307, 688. I would like to report that the fourth quarter expended amount was $30 million, 37,874. The incurred amount, which means the amount that we roll over in encumbrances to pay in the next fiscal year, but it is part of last year's budget, $259,674. If you go, turn to the first page two, which is your operating budget, you'll see that the, just as a reminder, the salary accounts are on the top section, and you'll see that that ended up with a positive of $17,207, which typically is the unanticipated leave of absence for teaching staff, which is very minimal. On the bottom section is your expense accounts, which that ended up with a deficit of $7,067, which is mostly due to out-of-district tuitions and travel expenses. So the net on the very bottom, I'm very, very pleased to say, is we are only returning back to the Town's General Fund $10,140.
Very good.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Which travel expenses in fourth year?
Professional development.
Professional development.
Yeah, that's typically what it is. I mean, I could hone in on additional details if anyone needed it.
But isn't that title?
Some of it does, but we have also operating.
Title two A.
Title two A.
Two A, yes.
Yeah, but we do have operating budget lines for professional development as well. Page three is your grants and your revolving. At the top of the page is your federal and state grants. Most of them have been expended. You will see some that have balances there, which are rolled into FY20 to be expended into FY20. On the bottom section are your revolving accounts. You'll see that all of them are in positive balances. I do want to make mention that on the circuit breaker, there were the fourth quarter payment of that $255,210 wasn't received until July 2nd, so that $10,000 amount does not obviously include that $255. I do just want to make mention that there is less in circuit breaker rollover than previous years, and therefore I am cautiously optimistic going into FY20, and I, you know, would like you to know that I will continue to monitor all of the accounts, and I will be presenting the first quarter probably at the next school committee meeting. Does anyone have any questions on anything?
Just an outstanding job. I mean, we're only returning $10,000 back.
Thank you very, very much.
On the 30 million plus budget is.
She's exceptional.
A lot of things happen at the end of the fiscal year. I'm very, very busy, but it takes a team here, so there's a lot of people that help in that. So thank you very much. I'm very, very pleased. I think that this was a very successful year.
Make a motion to accept the FY19 fourth quarter report.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion made.
Second.
Second and discussion. Hearing not all the favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Make the motion to accept the Maple Shade gift donation from William Barrett Enterprises in the amount of $250.
Yep, motion made.
Second.
And second and discussion. Hearing not all the favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Want to go to this one?
Well, this one here. So the next one is, there is a $1,500 donation here from the Tennis Court Association, and Mr. McGee wrote up a little blurb here to let us know that when the new tennis courts were installed with the Eastland Middle High School, the installing company purposely created expansion joints between each court and under each net. These expansion joints were created to expand during the settling process in order to prevent cracking in other parts of the court. Under the direction of DPW and the suggestion of installing company Cape and Island Tennis, the courts have completed their settling process, so it was time to go ahead and do this. The Tennis Association graciously gave us a gift of $1,500 to put towards those expenses. So we'd like to deposit this into the district-wide gift account for that purpose.
Does that cover the entire cost?
No.
Do you know what?
I do.
The cost was $13,000.
Okay.
And some, it's $13,000 and change. So Cape Cod, Cape Island and Tennis were the original company that installed the courts. We did look at Vermont Tennis and then another group in Connecticut just to get comparable pricing.
I remember that discussion.
We did get a price from the Connecticut group that actually was higher, and Vermont Tennis said that, you know, if they've put in these expansion joints, they would recommend going with Cape and Island Tennis to do this now that the five years of settling has been completed. So it's a combination, it's a partnership, putting, you know, repairing this.
Make a motion to accept a gift donation from the Eastland Middle Tennis Association for the tennis courts at the high school in the amount of $1,500.
Motion made. Second. Second and discussion. Hearing not all the favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Great, thank you. We'll give those deposited and expend those funds.
And have we sent the letter to thank them? How do we?
We will send them a letter now.
Where's the $1,500 going? To go to our rental account?
We're putting it into the district-wide gift account and then expending it right from there.
But it will be designated in the account of $1,500 for tennis courts.
I already have the purchase order ready to go, waiting for you guys to approve it so that we could expend it from there.
Be very similar to the gift accounts. Let's say someone donated a certain amount of money but says it wants to go to the music program at the high school. It goes into the gift account, but it'll be designated for the music program.
Specific purpose.
Okay, moving right along, we have our capital projects and prioritizing the five-year capital plan.
Okay, so in your packets, I have a cover sheet that lists one through 11 projects that we had discussed in our previous meeting. It gives you an idea of the cost of each of those projects, and then attached, you have the original five-year plan. I think the only updated pricing that we have on here is the Mountain View gym floor. We did get a quote, it's not going to be a rubberized floor, that's a wooden floor, and looking for where that is, $65,000 is the, is the price that we got from a local flooring company. So that we're putting in, going from a tiled floor to a traditional wood gym floor.
Discussion about the prioritization for 2021. Any thoughts? So you haven't heard, nobody's heard anything from town council yet?
No. Ms. Menardo is here for the MSBA.
She was.
And I thought she had indicated that at least they're going to recommend, I think her office is going to recommend bonding again. So I would imagine.
Nothing's official.
Number two would be something that would be Mountain View replacement of portable modulars. That's something you'd want to bond. I don't know whether they would bond something like the steam piping. It certainly has the life expectancy to bond of being 20 or 25 years or more. The other ones certainly are, the top three there really are our top three. They're pretty vital projects.
Yeah. Okay, we'll wait and see.
I did, you actually, Mr. Thompson, sorry, you had asked me to get more information from athletic director and track coach. So our track, while hitting, you know, the quoted life expectancy, is in good condition, has been patched in certain areas, and they feel certainly we can get, you know, two more seasons out of it. They're not going to say no to resurfacing if we were to get that, but they, they definitely, it should be on the five-year plan, it should be in the discussion, but they do feel that they're not going to be putting athletes at a detriment or disadvantage utilizing the track in its current condition.
Okay, thank you.
Want to keep us in draft form until we finally get some kind of communication from the town offices?
Well, we're going to submit it, or are we going to wait?
I will have to do individual project descriptions for all the FY21 projects anyway. So I will go ahead and do that and be at the ready.
But there's no request for, there's no deadline for submission?
At the moment, I don't believe we have any kind of deadline. This was more Department of Public Works making sure that they were ready, not only with the schools, but all of the municipal buildings, and it just makes sense for us to be ready as well.
Okay.
And then, so I can have all the individual projects ready to go, it's just a question of whether that's your final priority list.
Right.
You can table it for now.
So if you want to, you want to wait?
Yeah.
I would wait. We can wait, but we should have it on an agenda.
I'll put it back.
Well, keep it, yeah, keep it, keep it going.
Yeah.
Okay. Up next, we have a draft of the 2020-2021 ELPS school calendar.
So you had asked for a look both at the current way that the calendar is set up in terms of how we start school. I believe that's at your places in color form, which is a little easier to read. Number one is the one that follows what we currently do, where you have the Friday off before Labor Day. Students start then on that Tuesday. Convocation is on Monday, the 31st, and students are with us September 1, 2, and 3. Have the day off on Friday. You have a long weekend, and then you really get rolling again on Tuesday, the 8th. What we don't have in here are, we do have one professional development day that's going to be on Election Day, and we have to place one in March, which generally we do get some input from the collaborative committee and the leadership team on that, but we do have all vacations. Draft two puts a look at what it would look like if you did not have Friday, the 4th, off. So you just have your traditional long weekend, and students would go four days, Tuesday through Friday, and then come back on the 8th.
The numbers in the bottom left of each month, so September is 20, October 21, that's the number of school days.
Number of school days in the month.
So in November and December, I believe they both have 16, not 17, if I'm counting correctly. And if so.
Okay.
We're at 178 days.
So we might be off.
No, because the half a day is.
Oh, yeah.
The green.
The Wednesday, the 23rd in December is a half day.
Oh, there it is.
So get that, it's 17.
Oh, and the 25th. Yep, okay, thank you. I didn't see the half X. Got it.
It is kind of hidden.
It is, it is.
We should almost have another color for half days.
Yeah.
We can work on a different color.
Okay, so we have 180 days, so that's good. That's the easy one then. What are folks thinking about the Friday?
Has it gone back to the collaborative for feedback or no?
Not yet. Our next collaborative meeting is the 13th, so next week. We could have that discussion and bring it back to the following school committee meeting.
I think it's interesting to get their input, because that wasn't something that they discussed prior to our last meeting.
No.
We've had discussions here, but it hasn't gone back to that committee.
Right.
Which would probably be the informed and responsible way of making decisions. I mean, I've said my opinion as to the matter, so.
Sure.
I don't know if anyone else has ideas about that.
I agree with that, that maybe the collaborative committee should weigh back in on it before we move, just to get their, their point.
Okay.
Good with that, Rich?
Something that we, was part of the discussion that was attached to this, just gives you an idea of parents that are taking advantage of the opportunity of the half-day conferences. So we had 253 conferences across our elementary schools on October 23rd. We also have 77 conferences at Maple Shade and Mountain View that have been scheduled. Some may have already taken place, some are coming up in the future that are happening outside of the half-day structure. So it could be before school, it could be after school. Remember, two fifth grade, two fifth grades at Maple Shade and Mountain View, they are departmentalized, so whenever possible, they do try to meet as a team so that the family can meet with all the subjects.
Thank you for getting that information. That's just helpful to think, to think through.
Sure.
And for families to hear how those days are being utilized, as well as for us to know that, how that weighs into our decisions around the calendar.
Right, and I will make sure, maybe with the collaborative, that there's a little bit of a buzz around us getting these numbers, and so just to let them know, we're more interested in how many of our families are taking advantage of this. It's not so much how many conferences does Gordon Smith hold on the 23rd.
And are you bringing this data around the teacher-parent or the family-parent conferences to the collaborative as well? I would say if you do, it might be helpful, like, just as an additional column, because it was something that we talked about after. How many classrooms, like, those conferences are, are actually accounting for? So yes, there's potentially 31 conferences at a grade level, but what is that 30?
How many, yeah, how many.
Spread across. So if that's 10 classrooms, that just also adds a layer of how many conferences are happening in that three hours time span.
Good point.
Thank you, Gordon.
Sure.
All right, so we'll bring the calendar back as well.
Thank you.
The collaborative meets. Gordon, I see. Okay, and our final order of business, superintendent's educator plan.
So in your package, you have a copy of my educator plan for the year. It's obviously very synchronized with what you saw from the district presentation smart poll, so, you know, I firmly believe and obviously have to lean on our entire team that if we can do a good job with that, supporting the whole child goal, you're going to see the achievement numbers come up in all areas. I think that's going to be our, it's something we've been talking about for the last two years, both at the school committee level, but probably most importantly at the building level in terms of how we support our teachers in understanding this so that we can connect with all our students and support them the best way possible. So that's the, the student learning goal, in essence, and then the other two goals are practice goals, one that's a team goal, looking at a book study, innovate inside the box, empowering learners through.
Is she speaking?
Katie Novak's speaking tomorrow. Yeah, so we had George Kuros, who was one of the authors of that book, speak last year, and Katie Novak, if you have the opportunity between eight and 10, she's going to be speaking tomorrow, and she's exceptional. She spoke at the DESI Multi-Tiered Support System Conference. She's an assistant superintendent in the Groton Dunstable Public Schools, and the piece that is, it should hopefully hit home with all of our teachers is that she's in Massachusetts doing this. It's one thing if you're doing this sort of all over the country or all over the It's one thing if you're doing this sort of all over the country or all over the world, because there are different parameters that you're dealing with. But, you know, Katie Novak knows the new accountability system. And so that's where that sort of innovate inside the box, you know, it's, because we know we're not losing accountability ever. So how do we do this? How do we have a goal around supporting the whole child while also knowing that we need our scores to go up and we have to, we have an accountability system that we need to report on? So I'm looking forward to that. She did an excellent job at the MTSS conference. So we'll be reading her book, maybe even sign a book tomorrow, we'll see. And then individually, one of the things that I've been focusing in on the last few years is trying to build those partnerships, both in town and outside the community. I think the River Valley Consulting or Counseling Group is going to be hopefully one of the most beneficial ones. We're bringing in a partner from outside the community. Bay Path continues to be one that, my thinking has been reciprocal. We're able to provide them, we invite them, you know, if anybody is interested in coming tomorrow, they will be able to come to our workshops. And they're providing us an incredible benefit in terms of some of their student teachers and graduate students that are working with our students at the different schools. Those are just two examples. Hopefully we'll continue to build that. As you've heard, I know it's cliche, but it takes a village.
Is this something that we vote on tonight to approve, or is this, having only gone through this process once?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have to be voted on tonight, but it's generally, has been, but certainly.
I just, the only thing, and I think we talked about it a little bit at the end of last academic year, was the idea of how we can begin to work in some data-driven goals that are specific to the accountability system.
Sure.
And don't know that if we've actually fleshed that out as a committee, and how that could begin with the superintendent's.
Sure.
The superintendent's evaluation cycle and educator plan. So not sure if that's something we still are thinking about, but no, it was something that we broached at the very end of last academic year, and how we might be able to say, especially given, like you mentioned tonight, Gordon, that plateau that we see in three to eight.
Right.
Is there a way that we can begin that?
To move it forward.
To move it forward by making it a component of the educator plan? So that we can have that start from the top, so to speak.
Yeah.
But not sure if that's something that we're.
I'll put to whatever he thinks.
Talking about. I think it's a good idea.
To add it into the existing.
Plans, so thinking about it under like the SMART goal, like being able to have an item there that speaks to.
So under that student learning goal, add some of the, to the measurements, what actually would move?
Right, or think about like what, what numbers do we want to see to help break that plateau? Do we want to see an increase of 5%? And I'm not saying I have that answer right now, but before we adopt a plan that you'll be working towards all year, if we're noticing that trend in our data, how do we then help support you?
Right.
And actualizing that and giving you some license to do maybe more with our buildings and our administrators and our educators through the educator plan that you're working on?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to bring something back? Do you want to?
Yeah.
I'm uncomfortable, yeah. I, you spoke very well, Sarah, but I'm a little uncomfortable with starting to attach data to evaluations for the administrators. A little uncomfortable.
Yeah.
And that's, that's me, though, that's me. I think, though, in essence, we attach it, just, I mean, if you look at what we presented tonight, it's going to be there, we're going to have. We don't do a presentation without the data.
Right.
It's just in an informal context. Like how do we work to make it maybe rise to the top a little bit more? So that then we can have that trickle-down effect. But maybe that's something that we have to continue to talk about?
Yeah.
I think so, I agree, yeah.
Let me feel better if we kind of crystallize a little bit.
And that's totally fine. That's why I didn't feel comfortable necessarily voting to approve this without at least broaching that subject as a.
Right, but I think, you know, it can, we continue the conversation to figure out how to implement that.
How to do that, which is fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you still like to add language to this?
It doesn't have to be right now, maybe we do need more discussion as a team in order to be able to crystallize that.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable discussing it further to figure out, so that we're all in agreement how we attach something like this to a document.
Yeah, we never had that second professional development, obviously.
Right, right. And we need to.
Which maybe we could have around that.
Yeah, we could definitely.
So do a professional development for the next meeting?
No, we can't, not for the next meeting.
I think that's kind of where we left off anyways, in terms of the school committee's goals. So how do we, how do we ensure that we're allowing data to impact the necessary places? And in a way that isn't causing harm or just promoting the practices that we want to see happen?
Right. Yeah.
Fair enough. So should we, should approve this for this evening, and then we'll work on that going forward? Or you are looking for changes?
I'm saying maybe we should table it and then try to work on us as a team coming up with, what would an additional goal be with Gordon's input? To support having data in the educator plan for this current academic year. I think just given that plateau that we saw.
Yep.
How do we, how do we begin to mobilize around that?
Sure.
Going into the 1920 academic year.
Okay.
So you want to work with Gordon between now and the next meeting?
Yeah, and talk as a.
And we can come up. Bring it back and figure out if we can.
Okay.
How we approach it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're ready to rock and roll. Mr. Mackey, thank you for being here, sir. Sophia, thank you for all your input tonight.
We're all spoken to.
Thank you. You did a good job.
And I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded discussion, hearing not all of the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Good job, Mr. Chair.